Call this. Now we're beginning. I call this meeting of the Board of Directors of the Cambria Community Services District to order. Present, we have four of our members, President Stidell being presently absent, but we do have a quorum. And so I'm going to, during her absence until she arrives, I will be chairing the meeting for the, in the interim. Thank you. Welcome to everybody. I see we have a nice audience today. So, John, would you please, can you display the flag or do we have that capability today?
We do.
Let's do that now. Then I'll go ahead and pronounce the pledge of allegiance. If you guys will join me. Here we go. Okay. Here we go. Okay. So I pledge allegiance to the flag. I did state. Through the Republic. One nation under God, indivisible.
Justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Words that we can, that we need to bear in mind in these difficult times. The absence of the president means that at the moment, there is no president's report. However, I think it would probably be in order when she does arrive at the meeting that we might interrupt what our business and if she has a report, she could give it at that time. So moving on to agenda review for additions and deletions to the minutes or to the agenda. Do we have any? Okay, seeing none. The agenda stands as written. Moving now to board member communications or any board member may make an announcement, report briefly on his or her activities, or ask a question for clarification. Do we have any board member communications? Okay, seeing none. I do have one. I do wish to remind both the board and the audience and anyone who may be watching this now or later, that there is a memorial service, rather a celebration of life for our former member of the Finance Committee, Dwayne Lee. So that will be at one o'clock at the Bets Hall this Saturday. Yes, yes. Yep.
Oh, Johnson Center, isn't it?
Oh, yeah.
Your Johnson Center.
All right, everybody. Jocelyn Center. I'll repeat that then. Thank you. So Jocelyn Center, that will be one o'clock at the Jocelyn Center this Saturday, celebration of life. So invite all to who knew Duane, and maybe even if you didn't, he's done a great deal of service to our community and that. I just wish to acknowledge that. Moving along then, let us go to the reports here, public safety. So is anyone here from the Sheriff Department today? Here comes President Stidell, and let's give her a chance to get in and then have her take over. I'll tell you what, I do not see anyone from the Sheriff's Department, so let us go on to the Fire Chief's Report. Chief Hollingsworth, would you be so good as to report now?
Vice President Hal, thank you for letting me be here. Members of the board, it's good to see everyone today. Reporting on the month of September, we had sixty-five emergency responses in Cambria, one commercial vehicle fire, thirty-four emergency medical responses, and one ocean rescue that occurred at night. We were up to a total for seven hundred and sixty-six emergency responses for the year. Still on par to be increasing over the last few. Of those, we're at eighty-five percent delivery of service for locals versus non-locals. In recent weeks, there has been some concern in regards to some safety issues for the community, and we're expanding the safety bulletin concept that we started a little over a year ago. And in your packets, you've included the two most recent ones that we developed for the Fire Department that we're putting out to the community. One on the use of fire pits and one on the use of open burning and what is not allowed within the community. Those are available on the website, adding to the others that we've already created, and our goal is to be adding a few every month. In fact, we've already created the next ones for next month, which will include smoke detectors and carbon monoxide detectors, and those are already available on the website and we pushed out as we develop them in the board packets. You have them to review. If there's any questions on any of those, I encourage you members or the part of the community to call the fire station. We're happy to expand on those as necessary, but we feel it's a great avenue to be able to get this information out to the people in the community. We're going to be expanding this as we find additional things to discuss. And we probably have about thirty things on the list right now that we're going to be addressing and hope to have more. We have, as I said, added that stuff to the website. There's already stuff on the website regarding storm information and anticipation of heavy rains and wind, what to do during a public safety power shutdown, emergency supplies list, sand locations, which is relevant to this weekend, potentially depending on the amount of rain we get. Right now, it's only going to be in one spot in the town, and that's going to be down at the dock park, dock park on Rodeo Browns Road. Also indications there where to buy sandbags if you do and need them. For employment-related things, we have an open recruitment for our safer firefighter positions. We're going to be hiring three of those. It's open now until November 12th. We've put an amendment to be able to start them a little early, and we're working towards trying to get them onboard by January 1st of 2022. So we're very excited about kind of streamlining that process and adding that to the mix here. We're also continuing with our open reserve firefighter testing. We have only over the last three months now had a total of one applicant for that, but we're still aggressively pursuing that. And we, in fact, are getting people out to the local fire academies and other locations to see if we can get more people interested. That person is actually just started within the last week or so, so we're happy to have one additional onboard at least in regards to that. I'm happy to report from the Fire Safe Focus Group for our community that we have just been granted a $25,000 evacuation grant from the San Luis Obispo County Fire Safe Council. That's with Dan Turner. And they're going to be doing the five additional scenarios that remain in big parts of the community for evacuation planning. Some of those would include Park Hill, Moonstone, Cambria West, Highway One, things like that. And then various scenarios to that, that would be what happens if we only have the ranch road open, or what happens if we're able to add additional infrastructure? All of this is incredibly important information as we do disaster planning for the community, but will also be just seminal information that's going to be used to populate the things for Zone Haven, which I've already talked about, which is the big grant we got for the county chiefs, which will be applied to the entire county, including Cambria. So we're very excited about how that worked. I also wanted to do a real quick report on the Wildland Preparedness Event that we hosted on October 9th. We had Dan Turner here from the San Luis Obispo Fire Safe Council, a great speaker from the California Insurance Commission Office. That was Sally Westlake. And then a number of other speakers, including one of the gentlemen from the local building trades regarding wildland urban interface building materials and what's required secondary to the adoption of our code to protect our community. One of the real interesting things in that process above and beyond those speakers was the SIM table that we were able to get with a local grant from the Fire Safe Council, where they were able to do active fire modeling in real time to be able to show. But some of it was real time, and then some of it was projected, so they could actually show people how a fire under given scenario and situations would progress for the community. A very eye-opening experience for some. They've never seen anything like that, and we're going to be able to utilize that here locally. I wanted to bring up those two last events, specifically the evacuation grants and the Wildland Preparedness Events, just to do a very big shout out of appreciation to former board member Dave Pearson, who was a key player in getting those here and making those happen. We couldn't have done it without him, but we'd had a lot of help from people like Dan Turner, members from CERT, directors Tom Green, Karen D. We're definitely involved in that. I want to thank everybody for the continued diligence in working not only towards the evacuation stuff, but getting this information out to the community. And we're already looking at doing another event like this in the spring, spring of 2022. So with that, I'm done with my report for this month, and I'm over to you for any questions. Director Hal, you are muted, sir.
Thank you. Sorry. I have a bad habit of talking to myself, so I keep microphone off most of the time. Sorry. So I was asking, President Stidell, are you present, are you able to take over at this point, or shall I continue?
She's not quite here yet, Don, so she'll come online visually when she's in the seat.
No problem. No pressure, no pressure, President Stidell. So do we have any questions or commentary for the chief from the, from the directors? Okay, see, oh, yes, I do. Karen, Director Dean, please.
Thank you, Chief Hollingsworth, and it's very good news to hear that we got the grant to continue on with those evacuation studies. And yes, that wildfire preparedness event was great, and especially the SIM table. I think everybody should watch that so they can see what we may be facing if we have a wildfire. I have a question, though, on these little bulletins that are in our agenda packet. I've had a lot of neighbors talk to me about vacation rentals and their use of fire pits without the screens being present over the top, and in fact, without the people themselves being present. I was wondering if there's a way to get these bulletins to vacation rental companies to be put in the vacation rental homes. I think that would be good information for people who are not familiar with our area and really haven't had a lot of experience with, you know, these types of fires, to have that information in the home so that hopefully they'll be more careful.
Director Dean, that's an, it's an excellent observation, and we are working on that right now. Trying to work with the Cambria Council and then also members from the county to get the complete list of the VRBOs, vacation rental homes and things like that, so we can get these to the property owners. And remember, a lot of the owners don't live in the community, so we've got to reach out to them. We would like it to have it be something that is a mandatory compliance issue in regards to them getting that information whenever the home is rented out for people that don't live in the community. What, in the meantime, what I am encouraging everyone to do is that if you see it, please report it. And that means call directly to the Fire Department. Our number is nine two seven six two four zero. And ask to speak to the crew, let them know it's not an emergency, but this is what the issue is. If the crew is outrunning other errands or on another emergencies, I encourage you to call 911. Tell them it's not an emergency, but this is something they need to check on. This is something that does come into the Fire Department on a fairly regular basis. And I remind everybody that what we're, our goal here is compliance. It's not punitive in nature. So when we get those calls, we'll go out and interact with the people. And the vast majority of the time, it's people from out of the area that are not familiar with our ordinance. So where we clue the man, let him know what's going on, and then how they can make their area safe. In the meantime, that's what we're trying to do, and if we, every time we make that interaction, we get the contact information for the property owners and reach out to them to remind them what they need to do to be in compliance. So we're still trying to get some of that base information regarding who owns everything, and then we'll be putting that out to the owners for all those within the registered within the community.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's Director Gray.
Just a quick question about the wildfires, wildfire safety event on October 9th. There's a video of it, the AGP did. And the link, there's a link to it that I know I got from Dave Pearson. Is that on the carousel at the CCC website in order to the top?
I don't know off the top of my head. I believe it's been added to our emergency preparedness site already, but I'll check the website, and if it's not, I'll reach out to Haley and see if we can have it added or have that link added that will direct them to the right location.
That'd be great. That'd be great. Thank you. It was, it was a very good event. People would like to see it. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Gray. I have just one question. You mentioned trying to achieve mandatory compliance. How would that, how would that, how would that proceed? And is there anything that the, this board can do to assist in that?
Well, when I, when I talk about mandatory compliance, what I'm specifically referencing is in the information packets that go out to the people that rent these, that that information is included as something that is required for people to be registered to provide their homes in that capacity. There is, we've, we've made the leap on our code adoption to make that illegal within, open burning illegal within the community. However, the verbiage in there is, is a little bit open in regards to, to giving the Fire Chief or the authority having jurisdiction, the latitude to weigh specific events based on need or cause. It's done that way on purpose to give someone in my position the authority to work within those confines, but not be completely restricted. However, it may have, in, in year, in recent years, as we get more aggressive with this, led to a little bit of confusion. And so that's why we put out the safety bulletin in the way we did, and why we're trying to get a version of that completed, so push out to all the vacation homeowners to be able to have that included. We absolutely can look at that specific mandate in the future, fire code adoption, which is done on a three-year cycle. But in the meantime, I don't want to wait that long, and that's why we're trying to get some of this out to the owners now.
Thank you. Okay, at this point, I will call for a public comment on this and then pass this over. President Stidell, by nodding your head, are you about ready to take over?
I wonder if you'd like, Vice President Hal, that'd be fine.
Okay, any public comment on this particular item? Oh, before we do that, do we have anything for anybody from public safety? I'm not recognizing any names of, so I don't think we have anyone from the Sheriff's Department with us today. So in that event, do we have any, as this is our call for public comment on this item? Any questions or comments for Chief Hollingsworth? Going once, going twice. Okay, I see no public comment. And do we have any written comment on this item? General Manager Wygold, do we have any written comment on this?
Vice President Hal, there's no written comment for this subject.
Thank you. So at this point, there's my, my brief moment in the spotlight here. Let me pass the baton back over to President Stidell for the rest of the meeting. So President Stidell, it's, the gavel is yours.
Thank you very much, Vice President Hal, and I appreciate so much you being able to take care of that and handle that transition. It's appreciated. With that, I guess we are moving to, then we've gone through the Sheriff's and the Fire Chiefs Report, correct? So we're moving on to public comment, and this is public comment for items not on the agenda. And the limitation. Let's see, I don't have my normal. Wait a moment. Usually I'm using my cell phone for timing. And I was just not set up and prepared for that. So, excuse me for just a moment. I'll do that. All right. So GM Wygold, public comment?
Yes, we have Elizabeth Benhausen. Go ahead, Elizabeth.
Thank you very much. I had the distinct pleasure this morning of spending two hours on the beach in what's called dense fog. Quite a dramatic experience, I must say, and I won't fill you in on all the details, except to say that there was a fog bowl of stunning magnitude and intensity, and I'll post some photos of that on Facebook. But I want to say here, this morning, the surf was ten to twelve feet, in addition to the high tide of five plus. And already it was flowing over the sand berm. Saturday, the surf will be fifteen feet high. But I want to say something about Monday and Tuesday. Regardless of whether the rain falls from the heavens, the surf on Monday and Tuesday here is supposed to be twenty-five feet high. And I want to alert everybody, including the CCSD and all the departments. I have no idea, it's not my specialty, to know what that might mean in terms of overflow to the creeks and perhaps up the creeks. But I do know from what I saw this morning that there will be a total overflow of the sand berm at Santa, at Santa Rosa Creek Beach. And it might well come up to Shammel Park with the, with the surf at twenty-five feet, in addition to the high tide still around noon on those days. So I say that simply to alert you with this addendum. It is just amazing, the diversity of life that we have here in Cambria, apart from the humans, of course, which diversity is ample. But I urge you sometime, if you have the opportunity, simply to go out at this time of year and see what's on the beach. And of course, the breaching dolphins in the ocean show off at their leisure, which they did yesterday. So thank you very much, Madam Chair. I turn it back to you. Welcome. I hope that you can restart your computer at your discretion, relaxing after this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Benhausen. The computer seems to have been okay. For some reason, Zoom was an inaccessible mechanism for me this morning. So hopefully that can be resolved when I get back. Thank you. GM Wygold.
President Stidell, I don't see any other attendees raising their hand. One more. Tina Dickinson, go ahead.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Board. I, I have a question as to why staff is working in the office and has been, as I understand, for a good long time. Yet, if I go to the office, everything's in lockdown, or anybody else wants to go as a member of this community for whatever reason? Why is it that we are not able to go into the office, yet we can go into any shop or any restaurant or business masked, and there's no issue? So when, I mean, I've heard nothing about the opening of the office itself in any board meeting. So could someone please address that? I think we need to know why we can't. Not that I need to come to the office very often at all, but there may be occasion for a number of citizens, residents here to come to the office as we have in the past. So I'd like an explanation as to why it is in shutdown. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dickinson. Do we have any other attendees who wish to speak?
I don't have any other hands raised. We only have one email board comment. And I can turn that one over to you, President Stidell.
All right. Thank you. And Mr. Carmel, I believe you're going to provide this for us. Thank you.
I will. We do have one written comment from Holly Ludwigson. I would like to take this opportunity to address the CCSD Board of Directors via President Stidell with my concerns and dismay that since he was hired in June of 2019, our general manager has not been available to ratepayers and staff on Mondays due to an additional unrelated paid job commitment at Yale University. Mr. Wygold's employment at Yale deviates from Item Three in the employment agreement he signed on June 17th, 2019, regarding the requirements related to devotion to district business and hours of work. While he was granted an exception to those requirements through December 31st, 2019, I feel his teaching commitment at Yale each week can no longer be deemed to be an activity that does not conflict with or materially interfere with his duties as general manager. As a Cambria homeowner, full-time resident, and consistently on-time ratepayer since 2017, I feel it is practically and fiscally inappropriate to extend the brief exception made in 2019. If our general manager is working less than full-time hours, I feel his salary should be adjusted to a part-time rate. I'm guessing that if other staff wanted one day off each week to pursue another career and continued to be paid their full salary by CCSD, the answer would be no. That should all also be and should have been the answer to Mr. Wygold as of January 1st, 2020. Sincerely, Holly Ludwigson. I think that's the only comment letter.
Thank you, Mr. Carmel. And don't see any additional comments. So with public comment being addressed, we can move to our consent agenda. Director Farmer?
Thank you, President Stidell. I'm glad you've been able to join us. I just wanted to ask, just to pursue the question, the query that Ms. Dickinson made about, even though there are members of, there are staff at the office that the office isn't open. I'm sure there's a good reason for it, but perhaps General Manager Wygold could inform us as to why that is, that the public is unable to enter the office for business.
Well, the, as it was a public comment item, and we don't normally exchange dialogue during public comment, I think that if it's something that the board needs to address as a whole, we can. But other than that, I think we'll probably move on to consent agenda. Thank you. Uh, Director Gray or Mr. Carmel?
Madam President, David and I have a conflict of interest on Agenda Item 5C, as Digital West has been a source of income to our law firm in the past year. So we must recuse ourselves from that item if there are questions. I just wanted to get that in the record.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. Director Gray?
Yeah, I'd like Item 5F pulled for separate consideration.
All right. Any other items for under consideration that anyone would like to pull? And not seeing any other hands. All right, we'll go ahead and pull Item 5F from consent. And what we'll do is address the balance of the consent agenda. Director Farmer? Director Farmer, you're muted.
My apologies. I just want to ask a brief question with regard to 5D, or is that one that we're already pulling?
No, you can certainly, do you have a question of clarification?
Right, well, it's, I've already discussed this with our general manager, Mr. Wygold, but I thought in case anyone out there in the public was curious, on page eighty-six, you know, I noticed that the administrative department manager is still on the, on, in the salary schedule, though that, that position was terminated, let's say, a little over a year ago by someone who had been with us for a while. And so I just, like I said, Mr. General Manager Wygold and I discussed this. So perhaps in case people out there in the public are curious, Mr. Wygold, just briefly comment on why that particular position is still, is still there on the salary schedule.
Well, Director Farmer, do you want us to pull this so that we can have a conversation? Because that is not consent agenda for, and you've had a conversation with GM Wygold already, and he explained it satisfactorily. I don't understand the need for, for addressing it if,
Well, I, like I just said.
If it has to do with staffing.
Like I just said, I thought it might, people might be interested to know why it is that a position where a person occupied it and that person is gone, but that, in that position, so therefore there's no one in that position why it's still there and with nobody occupying it. That's all. So I'll just, I'll just let you go. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Director Gray, did you still have a question, or was it just that that was? Other than, and you're muted also.
I'm sorry, that was, I just wanted 5F pulled, so no further.
Okay, excellent. Okay, so 5F is pulled. And what we will do then is that entertain a motion for the balance of the consent agenda, A through G, with the exception of F. Do I hear a motion? For approval? Vice President Hal?
I moved, I moved that the consent agenda, A through E, and then G be adopted.
Thank you. And the second, Director Dean?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. And let's see, I almost said a sauna. GM Wygold, we have roll call, please.
Yes, please. On motion proposed, Vice President Hal?
Say it again?
Vice President Hal, how do you, how do you vote?
Sorry. Yes, I, thank you.
Director Dean?
I.
Director Gray?
I.
Director Farmer?
I.
Director Farmer, I. President Stidell?
I.
President Stidell, I. The motion carries five eyes to zero.
Thank you. So on consent agenda, five, A, B, C, D, E, and G. The motion. The motion for acceptance passes with a vote of 5-0. Thank you. And so now we'll address independently the consent agenda, Item 5F. And Jim Weigold, if you could introduce that for us, please.
Yes, President Stidell, Agenda Item 5S, 5F is consideration of adoption of Resolution 41-2021, authorizing the continuance of remote teleconference meetings of the legislative bodies of the Cambria Community Services District pursuant to Government Code Section 54953E3. It's recommended that the Board of Directors consider adoption of the resolution to continue authorizing remote teleconference meetings of the legislative bodies of the Cambria Community Services District. The fiscal impact is listed below for a remote teleconference meeting. And a reminder that at the September 24th Board of Directors meeting, the Board of Directors adopted this resolution authorizing remote teleconference meetings. And it must be updated monthly to continue the use of remote communications.
All right. Thank you. Well, do is move to public comment then. Is there anyone with public comment? I don't see any. All right, bringing you back to the board, Director Gray, you had something that you had wanted to address in this.
Yeah, I, I'm, you can hear me now, right? Good. I wanted to get a little more, maybe have a little more clarity on sort of the endpoint of meeting by remote. And I'm reading this up now because I think after this item went onto the agenda, the Public Health Officer in San Luis Obispo County issued a statement about the two criteria basically for lifting the indoor mask mandate. One of them, I think, is, has to do with the reaching a certain level, I think, is medium yellow or mild yellow on the CDC standards for infect, for infection rate. And then also having a stable and fairly low hospitalization rate. I was wondering if we, you know, I mean, this is again, the public might be wondering when we're going to go back to in-person meetings. It'd be, if this would be, not be a bad time to make a statement that when the county lifts its indoor mask mandates, we go back to in-person meetings, or some statement to that effect. Because otherwise, we're, I know it's a 30-day extension, you know, we can go indefinitely with 30-day extensions, but I think, I think we need to sort of make, make some kind of statement, or if not now, then quite soon, to say when it is we're going to go back to in-person meetings. And I think the criteria is laid out by the county is probably enough to actually trigger it. And also, it might also remove the grounds for having the remote meetings.
I guess what I, I am not sure of in the context of this is how, what the, what the offsetting impact is for the state requirements or the extension by the state, whether it's something that's can be accepted to by county, at county level. Mr. Carmel, is there something here that differentiates this in any way?
One of the requirements is that the governor's state of emergency declaration is, is in place. Once that goes away, we can't do this anymore. The other finding is made by the board itself that having the meetings poses an imminent threat to the public and to the board and to the audience and staff. That can be made without, without necessarily having orders in place. I think it's probably a more difficult finding to make. I think what the health officer said was currently we're in the yellow, we're in the yellow, no, we're in the orange tier.
Orange tier.
Orange tier, and we'll have to be in the yellow tier for a 10-day period before the mask mandate will drop. When those, when that situation occurs, I think the board will have an opportunity to revisit the issue. In the meantime, we put these in place so there's an option to have these virtual meetings. You don't, when these, when these resolutions are in place, you can still have an in-person meeting. In other words, you don't have to run the full 30 days and hold these things virtually. Again, when the facts militate revisiting the issue, and I think we'll all know when that is, we'll revisit the issue. I know that in some of my other agencies, there's been discussions of waiting until the end of the year. But again, that's just speculation based on, based what they think is going to happen, and you can't predict this coronavirus. You know, there are deviants all over the place, and it's just a matter of time, and the time will come. But I think we all have to be mindful that eventually we're going back to in-person meetings. And when those facts are available, then we'll no longer do these resolutions, and we'll move back to in-person meetings.
Thank you very much, Mr. Carmel. Vice President Howell?
Well, with all, with all due respect to Director Gray, I think right now the issue at hand is whether we go for another 30 days. The broader question I don't think is actually in order at the present time. So I like, I would, I move consideration of adoption of Resolution 41-2021, authorizing continuance of remote teleconference meetings of the legislative bodies of the Cambria Community Services District pursuant to Government Code Section 54953E3.
Thank you, Vice President Howell. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Director Dean? Thank you. And so, Jim Weigold, maybe, I keep trying to say Osama. Jim Weigold, may we please move to roll call on this?
Yes, President Stidell, on the motion of accepting Resolution 41-2021, Vice President Howell, how do you vote?
I.
Thank you, President, Vice President Howell, I. Director Dean?
I.
Director Dean, I. Director Gray?
I.
Director Gray, I. Director Farmer?
I.
Director Farmer, I. President Stidell?
I.
President Stidell, I. The vote is 5 to 0 in favor of Resolution 41-2021.
Thank you very much, Jim Weigold. So, the Resolution 41-2021 authorizing continuance of the remote teleconference meetings per Government Code 54953E3 is passed 5-0. Thank you all very much. So, we move then on to regular business. And the first item under regular business is 6A. Jim Weigold, will you introduce to us, please?
Yes, President Stidell, Agenda Item 6A is discussion and consideration of the Strategic Plan Status Report and Update. Staff recommends that the Board of Directors discuss and consider the monthly updates to the strategic plan. Attached is the Strategic Plan Grid with items in red that reflect changes since the last report. There is one change on page 99. Objective number one, that the, the RNI Ad-Hoc Committee addressing Next Enterprise, or the Next Enterprise Fund Ad-Hoc is, is now scheduled for a change, and it's going to be October 26, not October 20.
Director Dean, was there something specific to that that you wanted to add?
Yes, the date that we held our first meeting in this is incorrect as well. We met on October 7.
So, are there items of this strategic plan update that any of the directors would like to focus to or discuss further? Or if there are any additions or corrections? And not seeing any way, any, any, I'll go to public comment, please. Director Farmer?
Yes, I just want to mention with regard to achieving a balanced policy for growth and resources. On the first line there, comments in red, Director Farmer, Integrated Form and Ad-Hoc Committee. We have had a few meetings in this regard, and we're having one again tomorrow morning. And hopefully, in the effort to pursue ultimately determining who would be best available to become a forest, forest ecologist, a forest arborist, a forest manager for hopefully the entire community of Cambria. I think that's the ultimate goal that we're moving toward. And we have some very knowledgeable people that are contributing to this. And like I say, we'll be having a meeting tomorrow and hopefully have something even more productive to contribute the next time we do the update on the strategic plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Farmer. Just out of curiosity, what would be the crossover of that with the Los Tablas Creek and the Coval and all of those other items that are going forward for professional, with a professional forester to cover the forest in its totality, not just specific to Cambria?
Well, let me say this. I have a feeling that, I know Tom has his hand up, and perhaps he's probably going to say, well, what we should be addressing with regard to the forest manager are just properties that are owned by the district. But I'd like to think that overall, we'd like to, how can I say it, address the entire health, natural health of the community. That's, that's just me, and I'm sure Tom has a further comment. Thank you.
Director Gray?
Yeah, I, just, just to avoid some confusion here. The, what Director Farmer is referring to is specifically the Ad-Hoc Committee that was formed in March to investigate ways of funding and doing forest management for the region, for Cambria as a whole. And so this, that's a some, on a somewhat different track. I think the, he and I haven't, actually haven't met yet on the, on the strategic plan objective. And we will be, I'm sure. The one thing that might be worth mentioning, and I don't want to go off too off-track and talk about something that's not in the strategic plan, but the, the meeting tomorrow is, is quite important. But to, to, and to address President Stidell's question, it is about the Resource Conservation District setting up some kind of regional, and regional meaning this part of the county, maybe the South County too, regional forestry project where there is a forester who's hired under, primarily under a grant from the state to, to advise property owners and stakeholders, including the CCSD, but including other property owners on forest management. So it is an extension actually of, of what is going on, what has been going on at the Coval Ranch, taken to a larger scope. And we're going to be discussing that at an ad hoc committee meeting tomorrow. And Devin Best, who's the executive, chief executive of the RCD, is going to be there. And I think we're going to be represented if FRP, Green Space, and others, and Forest Committee will be there too. So that's, we're talking about the work, hopefully, we'll have something to say about that in, with some finality pretty soon about that project that started back in March. That's what this is.
Thank you. Thank you for the overview on that.
Yeah.
Are there any other areas of strategic plan information that we've, or update that we've been provided in this review that anyone would like to address, or as I said, if there are any additions or corrections or questions? No. All right. And there appear not to have been any public comment items. I'll wait for a moment.
President Stidell, there's no written comment on this item?
All right.
And appear to be no, no hands raised in the meeting.
Right. Okay, with that being the case then, we have no additional considerations in terms of this strategic plan status report update. It was a matter of discussion and reviewing the update, the monthly update. All right, thank you. We'll move on then from Agenda Item 6A to Agenda Item 6B. And Jim Weigold, would you introduce that for us, please?
Yes, President Stidell, Agenda Item 6B is discussion and consideration of Ordinance 04-2021, adding Chapter 6.09, mandatory organic waste disposal reduction to the Cambria Community Services District Code to comply with the requirements of SB 1383. It is recommended that the Board of Directors discuss, consider, and introduce Ordinance 04-2021, adding Chapter 6.09 to the CCSD code by title only and waive further reading in order to comply with the requirements of Senate Bill 1383 or SB 1383. There's no direct fiscal impact as a result of this item. This is essentially a requirement for state code that we're implementing. But our counsel, David Hirsch, is standing by in order to answer any questions that the board members may have.
Thank you, Jim Weigold. What I'd like to do first then is move to public comment. And do we have any public comment?
We have Elizabeth Benhausen. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. I certainly am glad the state of California is moving ahead with this. I think the less organic crap we have produced, the better. We're all off. And the requirement that it be reduced is one good way to motivate people who are a little hesitant to check out what they leave in terms of food waste, which is by the triple million tons in this country daily. I do want to note that even though complying with the state law entails no fiscal impact immediately for the CCSD, I appreciate the listing of the four different variables under future fiscal impact, impact in the discussion by the staff. And I alert people that this will entail, according to the staff, a Prop 218 event coming up in the not distant future in order to raise the money for the franchise, which is not what's under revision by the county in terms of Integrated Waste Management Authority, but rather the waste pickup people in order to make sure that they are paid adequately then to, to carry a lot of, a lot less organic waste away. This is very interesting to me because if you're going to produce less organic waste and have less of it put in the, in the recycling even, well, I guess we probably won't do that. We'll just switch our organic crap from gray to green. I suppose that's an advance on Planet Earth's behalf, although I certainly am not sure that that's the case. I look forward very much to Mr. Hirsch explaining all the complexities of this law, and I compliment Mr. Carmel for being able to hand it off to a partner. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ben. Has there any other public comment, Jim Weigold?
Doesn't appear there any other public comment, and there is no written public comment.
All right. Then I'll bring you back to the board for discussion. Does the board, anyone on the board have any questions or any specifics that Mr. Hirsch is available to address? I'm not seeing any hands. All right. Well, with that being the case then, what we would be looking at is reading this by title owner only and waiving further reading. Is there anyone who would like to take that? Director Farmer? You're muted.
That, thank you. Sorry. Once again, I just want to make a couple of brief comments. Obviously, there's not going to be any fiscal impact on the district. But since I'm noticing about halfway down, there are going to be some But since I'm noticing about halfway down, there are going to be some fee increases. I did want to say one thing, that when we've had fee increases, they've been relatively minimal. And I think we can be grateful for that. But what I, you know, I'm noticing here that initially, you know, this bill was signed into law of September of 2016, over five years ago, and we're now implementing it. I recall visiting a friend of mine up in Seattle in spring of 2009, and they had already implemented this. In other words, the green waste can, you could put all kinds of whatever was left from your kitchen, whatever you were doing in the kitchen, you could put in the green waste can. It wasn't just from what was going on outside in the garden or you know, cleaning up the yard or something like that. So I just wanted to mention that also. With regard to what, what we, what's left over in the kitchen. I just want to encourage any of this, doesn't have to do, let's say, with animal products. But whatever it is that you have in the kitchen that's, that's left over, maybe it's gotten beyond where it's edible. Let's say, you know, lettuce or any kinds of vegetables along those lines that you might have, that you're just going to throw away. I might encourage members of the community, you know, especially if you have a garden or you have potted plants. If you have a way out in the yard to do a compost pile, because what have you, get some, go to the nursery, get a bag of soil, put whatever it is from the kitchen, you know, combine that, even if it's just a hole in the ground, and just turn it over every once in a while, add to it. Maybe do two, two holes in the ground, so to speak. And so you let one continue to develop, and then begin a new one. And then take that, that, that product, which is extremely fragrant and very, just a great way. It's, it's very healthy for the plants. And then you can put that in your potted plants, put that around the plants that you have in the ground, work them into the soil. And it makes for much healthier, like I said, either potted plants or plants in the soil to utilize a compost pile. So this just kind of brought that to my attention. So I just wanted to pass that on to the, the, the community at large. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Director Farmer. And it's all, it's all excellent information for the community as a whole to be familiar with and to be directing themselves towards. Agreed. Thank you. Director Gray.
Yeah, thank you, President Sidell. I had a question. We, there is no, you know, obvious fiscal impact or large sizable fiscal impact. But there is an enforcement responsibility that is spelled out for the district, for CCSD, which is more, I think, than is being done now by the district in terms of seeing, making sure. I think especially probably with commercial and multifamily customers, especially making sure that these rules are being followed. I'm kind of curious, is, does this entail any extra staffing or, or a, something that can be quantified?
I believe the expectation is that IWMA is going to be, is the delegate of the district doing a lot of those different efforts. We did have to address enforcement, otherwise as far as the stuff in the ordinance relating to civil penalties, which don't begin until January 1st, 2024. That's a requirement that the state has that we have to include in the ordinance. But as a practical matter, I, I think the way it's going to work in, in, in most jurisdictions of the county, except for the county, I guess, since they pulled out of IWMA, is that IWMA is going to have the expertise and do those different tasks in terms of monitoring, inspections, and so on. And if there's a problem at some point, again, after 2024, they would then be looking to the district to issue a civil fine penalty, things like that, if there's a problem with compliance.
So, so the IWMA is the designated entity for the general manager, essentially, in terms of the language of this ordinance?
As a practical matter.
Practical matter.
And IWMA has already provided, for example, a draft letter to create that delegation to them that they've sent out to, to, to various entities for use. So that's pretty much how it's set up. It's, obviously, it's a very complicated new law, and the requirements that we're adopting by virtue of this ordinance are complicated in terms of what then must be enforced. But that's where the expertise is coming in from IWMA and their staffing. And of course, they are increasing their fees accordingly. And it's correct, those are going to end up showing up, I'm sure, in rates. So, but, but it's, it's quite an effort, obviously, statewide, not just here. The same scheme is being adopted by hundreds of cities, counties, and special districts throughout the state as a result of the mandates that the state has created. And as, as was mentioned in the staff report, the ordinance itself is based upon work done by a consultant HF and H. And that same consultant was hired by the state of California earlier to create model ordinances, model contract provisions with haulers and so on. And so basically, we're working with HF and H when it comes to what we're adopting. But again, I looked at a staff report from a city recently, and they talked in the staff report how it was based upon the model ordinance, which, that was created at the state level. And that model ordinance at the state level was developed by the same consultant IWMA is using here.
Thank you, Mr. Hirsch.
Vice President Howell, you have a question?
A question or observation? Yeah, so Mr. Hirsch, the only thing that I'm a little bit, I'm just wondering, in, in the discussion, the section regarding enforcement, there's a lot of reference to the district. But in the definitions, the only reference I see is to the district enforcement official. So I understand from the discussion that where the references to the district, it can refer the delegate of the district that we have contracted with. But I'm just wondering if maybe had that been left off of the definitions, or is it even important?
I, I believe that the enforcement official is designated by the general manager. And that's to come as far as administratively implementing the ordinance. We're also going to have to create for some procedures. Special districts, for the most part, I don't think, have had those kind of provisions developed, which cities and counties do have in place as far as civil fine ordinances, for example, where you would also provide, for example, hearing procedures for people that might dispute a civil penalty that's being imposed. So those are to come.
Thank you. I think as you were talking, I also had a bit of a moment of enlightenment. So I think we're good. I read a little further when it speaks of the responsible entity for enforcement, and it does call out specifically the enforcement officials and/or they're designated.
And keep, and keep in mind that the first two years, from January 1st, 2022 to January 1st, 2024, the process will be to provide education and so on, and not be punitive in terms of issuing penalties. Won't start for a couple of years, so we have some breathing room as far as putting those kind of things in place.
Yeah, and I would point out, I think that's a very good provision because it's going to take a while. We're going to have to change the way we do things, and it's going to take a while for us to learn.
Yeah, habits are going to change.
The cheapest of those, I'll shut up. The cheapest of those is that we have a bigger responsibility to keep our recycle, recyclable stuff in the blue bin to keep it uncontaminated, because that's where we could be fined. If anything organic or anything non-recyclable gets in there, I envision some issues. So that's an area where I think people have to change their habits, and possibly the size of their refuse containers as well. Observation.
No, good one. Are there any other questions or items that people want to discuss relative to this agenda? Item 6B. All right then, what I will do to go ahead and move this forward is move to adopt Ordinance 042021, adding Chapter 6.09 mandatory organic waste disposal reduction to the Cambria Community Services District Code to comply with requirements of SB 1383, and waive further reading.
It would be to, it would be to introduce the ordinance, not adopt.
Introduce it.
Thank you. Introduce, and with the vote adopt. Shall I repeat it, or will it? Oh, that'd be sufficient. And Director Farmer, were you indicating a second, or were you? Oh, Director Gray.
I was just going to second it, but second it with the, you know, introduction, not.
All right, Director Farmer.
I, I got in a little bit late here. I just want to make one comment. And this may sound like idiosyncratic, but I have this habit when I'm going out on a walk with Chiron to like just look in people's trash and blue bin and see what the heck are they throwing away? And I am really surprised, number one, at how much trash and recycling is being generated these days, but also what people throw in the recycling that shouldn't even be in there. So I, because, and the reason I'm bringing this up is because I believe it was Vice President Howell who mentioned needing to educate the populace, because you would think it would be common sense, but I can guarantee you just by observation that people using common sense out there is not necessarily happening. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Farmer. All right, we've had, we've had the motion and a second. Jim Michael, would you take role, please?
Yes, President Sidell, President Sidell, on the motion to introduce Ordinance 04-2021, how do you vote?
Aye.
President Sidell, aye. Director Gray?
Aye.
Director Gray, aye. Director Farmer?
Aye.
Director Farmer, aye. Director Dean?
Aye.
Director Dean, aye. And Vice President Howell?
Aye.
Vice President, aye. Vice President Howell, aye. The motion carries five to zero.
Thank you, Jim Michael. And so Ordinance 04-2021. The organic waste disposal reduction for Cambria Services Community District in compliance with SB 1383 passes on the vote of five zero. Thank you. We'll move on from regular business then to our managing reports. And I'll call initially for any public comment relative to the GM Finance Managers Utilities Report.
Elizabeth Benhausen, go ahead.
Thank you very much. I am curious, number one, about the, my apparent inability to understand the website because I understood from your last meeting, or perhaps two meetings ago, that there would be a specific page now for the skate park on the CCSD website, and I am totally unable to find it. And I have searched at least quasi diligently. So, and I noticed in the General Managers' Report today, there is reference to the probability of getting the final report from Spawn on the skate park today. Once again, a nice coincidence of the meeting and the, I assume the receipt of the report, because that's what was reported in, in print. So I look forward to an update on the skate park. Any news was not necessarily good news, but we certainly need good news on the update on the skate park. Number two, I'm looking at the update on the well levels for October 15th, which is of course not yet the end of the month reading. But certainly, there are two levels there that are of some concern regarding the stages. They, a couple of them are actually in stage five rather than stage four of your water accountability mechanism now. I'm not suggesting at all that I think you ought to be declaring stage five with a huge amendment to your agenda today. I'm not saying that at all. And it could well be that the rain that comes on, we hope, on Monday and Tuesday will also change some of the well levels significantly. But I, I look forward to your next meeting in November, let's say, when there is a little more explanation for the public of how it is determined what stage you are declaring us to be in. I know that it's all worked out with algorithms and charts very clear as can be. It's just somewhat incomprehensible for many people with whom I've spoken. So if you would do us the favor again of not only transparency, but clarity and simplicity, how about setting up those two standards in addition? So that it is, it is able for us public people to understand what exactly are you doing to determine the rankings of the various criteria for each stage? Because you give us the criteria, but you do not tell us how you weight the criteria when you make the decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Benhausen. And do we have any other comment?
And President Sidell, there's no written comment, and I don't see any other comment from the meeting here.
All right. Thank you very much, Jim Michael. What we'll do then is move on to the General Managers' Reports. Jim Michael.
Thank you, President Sidell. So we're, we're both excited and cautious about the prediction for rain over the next couple of days. We may lead to a revision in the water conservation stage, but we'll see how that turns out depending on the rain situation. But we're also very cognizant of the last time that we experienced an atmospheric river, which was January 28, 29, riveted in my brain because of the damage it did to the district here. So I wanted to let you know that, that the staff has taken a lot of effort again to prep for the storm. The, the most late recent prediction was only about an inch. But as we've seen, that can vary over the, over the county drastically. I've been in touch with the Slow County Public Works Head, and there's got emergency crew ready to go if we have to experience any kind of major flooding here on West Main Street again and require the use of the, the pumps there. All the CCSD departments have prepared for the storm, mostly on the Sunday and Monday event. The wastewater plant is lowering their effluent pond levels down to the lowest levels there. So that if we see another increase in influent coming into the plant, we'll be able to handle that without a big issue. And they're putting other, the other emergency actions that they put into place for lessons learned from the last storm as well. Over on facilities and resources, at the rodeo grounds, they've removed everything off of the floor again, raised it up onto benchtops, desktops, electronics up. So should Santa Rosa Creek overflow yet again, we'll, we'll be in a better position, saving a lot of our equipment there. And of course, the fire department's on alert as well. I talked to their, the on-shift group that's going to be there on Friday, myself yesterday. And so they're, they're all prepared as well. As was mentioned on the skate park, we did receive the, since this report went to press last week, we did receive the final report from Spawn Ranch, our skate park designer. I can report that our district engineer is going to be holding a pre-planning meeting with the county on Monday, the 25th. I can report that our district engineer is gonna be holding a pre-planning meeting with the county on Monday, the twenty fifth. And then together with that information, staff will be better prepared to, to augment the presentation by Spawn Ranch. And we'll do that through a special board meeting on Saturday, October thirtieth at ten AM. Our goal is to post the staff report for that, that it'll include the Spawn Ranch presentation, as well as embedded in the staff report some comments from our district engineer, so that the board can receive the presentation, discuss and consider it as well and ask questions. That, that concludes the highlights of, of my general manager report as our facilities and resources manager is on vacation this week. I'll make a brief report on that. As, as normal, Carlos has done a, a photo montage of all the things he's worked on the past month. But the big significant effort was on tree work on the Fiscalini Ranch. And once that was done, that took two to three weeks. And thanks to Fiscalini, friends of Fiscalini Ranch, the FFRP, because they helped cover some of the bills for some of the tree work that required outside help. And so they, they picked up the tab a very significant amount of money in the tens of thousands for some help there, because as you recall, it was up about eighty trees that we had to dismantle and take apart that were felled as a result of the January storm. In addition to the tree work, there obviously, conclusion of that, that the FNR staff was able to get at some of the more detailed maintenance work primarily through the various trails around town. And you see some of the, the work in the photos there, including over at the pedestrian bridge. And then as is always the case, we're continually dismantling and working with law enforcement on our homeless encampments that seem to pop up around town. And so as has been the case, it's a, it's a long process for each individual incident, because we have to notify law enforcement, they have to come out, then there's a a posting that we have to do and give time for the encampment folks to dismantle their camp and then potentially store their, their belongings as well. Pending your questions, that concludes my report and the FNR report.
Thank you, Jim White Gold. I just wanted to extend a little more information regarding the special meeting that you had referenced for October thirtieth. The intent of that meeting is for the board to be able to formally accept the report from Spawn Ranch, which it contracted for. And then to have some initial review of the information and discussion, because of course, we can't have a discussion as a body about it until we meet as a board. The output of that is not a decision about skate park. The output is for the board to make a decision about submitting it to the pros commission for their review and requesting their feedback in review of the material. Additionally, if there are items that individual board members feel that they would like to discuss about putting forward as direction from the board, that they'd like to have pros take into consideration in their review of the document. That is something that would take part of the conversation at that meeting on the thirtieth also. So I ask you to think in terms of that as you go forward to that date, that meeting. Just for your information also, my first hell and I have made a conscious decision to target that meeting for Saturday to make the date available to the younger constituents in our community who've been very much involved in this and for the public too. So that's the purpose of being on a Saturday, which isn't always something where we can either can accommodate or would normally target for. So I just wanted to relay that additional information out to the community. Director Farmer.
Yes, thank you, President Stidell. I just want to commend staff, I want to commend you and Vice President Howell for, for for setting up this meeting for Saturday, so the youth can attend, so they can comment and show their enthusiasm for this project in a way that we necessarily haven't seen, and to allow some people that have already contributed, you know, monies to the skate park to allow them to attend as well as Saturday morning might be a little bit easier for some folks that, than on a, on a weekday. So I just wanted to mention that. Thank you so much. Also, with regard to the rain this weekend, you know, initially it was going to be, let's say, two to six inches of rain. According to PG and E meteorologist John Lindsay, it's now down to one to three inches of rain, let's say, from, let's say, mid, mid-Sunday to Sunday evening to sometime Monday, Monday morning, Monday afternoon. So we can only hope that it's, let's say, two inches of rain spread out over a fairly sufficient amount of time as opposed to two inches of rain, let's say, coming down in about eight hours, which could be slightly problematic. So I just wanted to update the, update the weather report. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Farmer. Any other comments before we, or questions before you move on to Finance Manager's Report? Right, not seeing any, Mr. Field. Welcome.
Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you, President Stidell. So the Finance Managers' Report is for the month of September. And I think probably the only highlight I should provide is earlier in your board's consent agenda, you approved an agent authorization designation for submitting to the state of California our disaster relief application. So I had that all ready to go. So as soon as your board approved that, I sent that email to them. So we have submitted our project application with all of our January, February storm activity. So in future, Finance Manager Report and probably the General Managers' Report will be reporting out on the status of that claim and the process that we have to go through. But, you know, it'll probably be a six to nine to maybe twelve month process, I'm gonna guess, but that's, that's just kind of my guess right now. I have no other information thus far on our submittal about six months ago on the COVID-related costs that we submitted to FEMA. So that, as far as I'm aware, is still under their review. And we're just waiting to hear something back from them. On the Tyler Financial System Upgrade, we're kind of coming to the end of that process with Tyler, and then it's going to become, you know, our challenge to put it into practice. So the most recent module that we are putting into practice is the budget module, and you'll be seeing that next week. Go to Finance Committee, because our first quarterly report will be from the spreadsheets, will not be the green colored spreadsheets you've been accustomed to reading and understanding. It's going to be a whole new set of documents and format that everybody will have to read and understand and get used to the new format, but it is system-generated. All of our budgetary information has been put in there. We've put in some purchase orders, so you'll see some encumbrances. So, so that'll be a whole new process that we'll be talking about at the second meeting in November, and we'll have the first look at it on Tuesday's Finance Committee meeting. The next steps for Tyler would be to get the fixed asset module into practice. So that's been configured. So we're moving into that direction in the, in the next couple of weeks to get that all configured and into our, whether it's a quarterly practice or an annual practice, but just getting that module familiar and, you know, getting it into practice for us. As far as the audit, we're still on track for the auditors to be out here the first week of November. Yeah, that'll be, no, I guess it is actually the second week in November, because the first will be, I believe, on a Monday. So it's November eighth that they'll be out here. So it'll be the second week of November. So we're still on track to have them be out here to get the fieldwork started and get moving on the audit. I don't have anything else for you, so I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
All good news. Congratulations on moving things forward to within, within Tyler. It'll be, it'll be a learning experience and interesting to see our budget now that we've gotten familiar with using this format to see our budget in a new format and to orient ourselves to that. Thank you. All right. Any questions for Mr. Field? All right. I'm not seeing any hands raised. So, Mr. Dan, so good to see you. Your Utilities Report, please.
Yes, thank you, President Stidell. Good afternoon, everyone. Can, can everyone hear me okay? Okay, sorry. So I, first of all, I'm surprised to be giving their Utilities Report this early, so I'm a little bit sure.
I know.
But I, you know, I'm ready to give, I'm ready to present it. So these are for activities that took place in September. So obviously, if you have any questions of, of things that happened, you know, shortly after that, you're welcome to ask me about those as well. But starting with the wastewater plant, I want to commend the guys that, that did some repairs around the plant. That seems to be the theme recently, within the last few weeks here, is things are, are starting to just little some minor to close to major things breaking down, but the guys are able to repair, repair them in-house. A couple of examples was the effluent pump, pump number two is shown in your on figure A there in your, in the Utilities Report. Tim and Tony commend them that they were able to, to help rebuild the, you know, get the parts and help rebuild that pump, get it up and running. Especially now that with the rains that are, that we anticipate coming within the next few days here, which I'm hoping we will get the, the three inches that were, that was predicted and hopefully get it over a period of a week. So but those are important to us for all of those pumps to be pumping, because we, we do get a large amount of infiltration and inflow coming to the plant whenever there's a rain event that happens. There was also a somewhat major communications fix that needed to, to take place. We had to hire, bring out Andy Thompson for that, which, which the, the company is tough automation. He was able to, to fix the, the the influent flow control that gives data to our SCADA. And so there, there was a problem with the communication line that he was able to fix. So so those are, those, I wanted to highlight those as well for, for the month of September. In our collection system, the, the guys are continuing to, to do their shedding and cleaning of the collection system maintenance. Our collection system maintenance guys are doing a great job doing that systematically, working through town. You can see one of the figures there, like roots were, were taken out from the collection system. The new thing that, that came out today, I just wanted to tell you, it's kind of funny. There was a couple of, there was a couple of curtain rods that made it to our sewer system. I don't know how those get there, but that was the latest thing. So if that doesn't make the picture, I mentioned it to you here. Also, we've, we've, we're investigating a way to, to help seal the manholes, especially over near the creek. So figure D in, in the, in the Utilities Report shows us using that particular product to help seal the joints of the manholes. So, you know, when we do get the, the big rain events that it doesn't leak through the manhole and then eventually get into our system. So that picture there of, of me and three other guys looking, I, it doesn't take that many guys to, to do that work. That was just me. I wasn't doing anything. I was just inspecting to see that, oh, good, the, the thing is working. So but it normally doesn't take that much. But we do need a minimum number of guys whenever there's a confined space entry for a situation like that. Moving on to our water system. A couple of things to report. There, there were some trees that were removed or trimmed, I should say, in the Lemert tank area that was starting to encroach a little bit. And we got a lot of good help from the Fire Safety Council that were able to remove those dead trees for us. And I wanted to highlight too, that there was a leak on one of the disinfection tanks for our Santa Rosa well number four. And I bring this up, you know, because this highlights the importance of a contain, a secondary containment, you know, in all of our, all of our chemical or hazardous waste tanks, there's always supposed to be, there is. And for those who don't, they should have a secondary containment. And, and it's a good thing we had one of those, because it leaked into the secondary containment. Good thing about it was that, you know, we do have a, an agreement with, with Brentag that supplies these tanks, and they were able to replace it at no additional cost to the district. Some upgraded radios were, were installed at the Pine Knolls Tank. This will help us with our improved communications with both water and wastewater SCADA systems. Several distribution leaks were repaired as well in light of all of this work that was happening. And we are also trying to figure out ways to deter theft, where we starting, started to see some problems with theft over in one of our solar arrays, communication sites over near San Simeon Creek Road. So I so we're, we're trying to, we're, the, the safety, the security measures that we've employed in the past doesn't seem to be working, so we're looking for ways to bolster those as well. Moving on to the, the reclamation facility. Oh, as far as our, our water supply status, you know, we're, we're on track as far as the as far as our allocations for both Simeon Creek and Santa Rosa Creek. The, the San Simeon Creek wells are, you know, kind of have hovering around average based on this year, of course, based on the time of the year. Again, we, we compare averages based on the season, so we are trending, you know, right around the, the average. And as far as preparations for the water reclamation facility, we are still in a stage four, and we don't recommend changing stage four until we, we get a difference, you know, any differences through rain and differences that would be remaining. So, but we, so we definitely still recommend staying on stage four. And we are still prepared. And because of, because of that, one of the things that, that we're tasked to do is to continue to prepare the water reclamation facility for operation, should it be required. So, you know, we're, we're doing basic maintenance. We've moved the, the, our, our reverse osmosis filters on site, ready to be installed. We're also doing basic maintenance, like cleaning out the stainless steel, purging the stainless steel lines for any condensation, installing new air filters. Of reconditioning some valves that are on the system as well. And there's a term there that called repinning that I, I think I need to explain, because it's, it's an industry jargon that I, I, that slipped by me when I was, when I was helping to write this. So repinning, what, what that is, is all of the, the membranes are actually little tiny straws in the, inside those membrane containers. And whenever there's a problem with, with one of the, the straws, if you will, they need to be pinned, literally. There's, there's a special pin that's used to, to, to fix those if, if there is a problem. And so we stated And so we stated that there shows no need of repinning. So it means that the, the, the filters are in good condition. The the micro filtration system. And then I added a new category called in-stream flow study and adaptive management plan and. You know, the, the work that Cindy Cleveland is continuing to do is she's establishing a baseline. For our. For adaptive management plan, which, you know. It it was a requirement from our our SCIR to to continue to. To do monitoring based on the AMP, our adaptive management plan. And the basics of that work right at this moment, since there, since the. The facility is not operating. She is continuing to do baseline monitoring and the baseline monitoring of of. The reaches, the repairing reaches, like all of the the areas near the creek of Van, both Van Gordon and San Simeon. And and things like. Monitoring surveys of red-legged frogs, tide water gobies, repair, and other riparian vegetation. And right now, you know, there's the, the, the focus of the monitoring is establishing a baseline. Because this has been a good year for that. And the final. Annual report will be released in December of the, because she's, she's really close to completing a full year's. Monitoring cycle. There's not a whole lot to report as far as Gassiet's. Work regarding the the hydrology with the. With the installation of those, those transducers there. All, all I can tell you right now is that it is following the typical dry season trend. There hasn't been any pumping activities there because there, there hasn't been any irrigation. And in our efforts to to try to get a pump test going, it turns out we're not going to do that this time. So. That's as far as that's concerned. And we did have a kickoff meeting in September. For the task one of the in-stream flow study with Stillwater Sciences. So that project is moving. They've completed their historical document review. And we, we do have a meeting scheduled with with a tech, our technical advisory committee. We've, we've identified those who are going to be part of that committee and we're going to be kicking out that meeting soon in in a week. Couple of last thing, last things for conservation and permits, you can see the data there. Relating to our current situation. With the trends or the the data criteria of Santa Rosa. Well, level number four, that's what SR four means, Windsor Bridge East Water Level, Windsor Bridge West Water Level. And the gradient between SS two and. And. I'm blanking out, so, and and nine before. So anyway, that, that, that is, that all still kind of follows. The, the gradient is the only one there that would be. Considered a stage five at this moment, but, but the average sensei wells are stage three, the. The Wizard Bridge East, the stage three. The, and the Santa Rosa well level number four is considered stage one, obviously, which is. Somewhat odd, but I'm not surprised. I do want to do a special commendation for Melissa Bland. She. Participated in in getting her what's called a qualified water efficiency landscaper. Certification and she was able to pass the exam, the the QWEL exam and. Got a ninety-nine percent on the exam. I I told her that it wasn't quite perfect though, so, but she. Passed and so I commend her for that and she's, so now she is able to actually. Help with those kind of surveys to and and help really give good pointers as far as water. Water efficient landscapes. What we're doing now, that that was as part of our stage four efforts is where we've launched. What we used to call water audits, we're calling it something a little bit more accurate. We're calling it water use efficiency walkthroughs. And and some people in our community and we're offering this to both residential and commercial. And we've already had some. Some really good. Value from this, one of them, they, they discovered through, because of the survey, they were able to discover a leak and was able to save approximately three hundred gallons of water. So that service is available, it's available on request. People are slowly. Starting to take advantage of this as both Megan and Melissa are are starting to do more of these. These walkthroughs, so. I encourage everyone to participate in in that. The, the last thing, there's a permit counter activity as listed there. The new thing regarding vacation rental will serves. And I just want to clarify that, you know. That that when we say vacation rental will serves. What this is, it's a, it's a classification. For those who want to become a a vacation rental. Because you need to register, you need to apply with the county to become a vacation rental. And in order for them to complete the process, they need, we need to give them a will serve. Designating them as a, as a vacation rental, but there's no. There's no structural changes, I mean, you know, they're, they're not doing any remodels, that that's not what this is for. That, that, that falls under the other category, but, but they're not doing any of that. It's just for them to. So that they can apply to become a vacation rental through the county and and. And we participate with that by by issuing them what's called a vacation will serve. So that, I believe, is the, the highlights of the, the utilities report. And again, I'm, I'm available for any questions or clarifications.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dan. So lots of information. And I do appreciate the clarification on vacation will serves, that that term will serve. Although it's not, not something designated by us, certainly causes enough confusion for folks. In the community and. And in this case and in others, the world service is just merely acknowledging that there is water service. To a position already, when the county comes and asks question about any kind of. Application that may be being made with them in this case, vacation rentals. So it isn't often, we actually have the names of folks within your staff who've been kind of going above and beyond to. Really take care of their houses, you referred to it, which I thought was wonderful. So. Please, please pass on our thanks and congratulations to Tony and Tim for the work that. They did and and our appreciation for that. And also congratulations to Ms. Bland on her QWBL certification. I'm not surprised she got a ninety-nine. One thing I wanted to ask about, and it just, this is just a perception and ignorance on my part, but. In the, the collection system information, the one picture, the figure D. Where the extraction hoses down, the big yellow hose is down there, is that actually an individual? Down in there or is that just some kind of pump plug device? Thing that's sitting next to it. It almost, it almost looks like. Someone wearing a, a tank.
Yeah, so, no, that, that is Tony that's in that hole. Right now and the, and that yellow, and that yellow pipe is air, it is, it's our, it's an airline that we, because we need to pump air in there. And yeah, we, so that's him inside the, the manhole and we are up there looking down on him, cheering him on.
Well, I, I, I have to say that that probably brought an enlightenment. To at least myself and maybe others and I'm, I'm sure most of the community to the levels at which. Are, are the people who work for the CCSD provide services to us and what they have to do to maintain those services for us. So actually, I appreciate very much having had a chance to see that picture. It brings a little reality to the situation. So please thank Tony. Are there any questions, Director Farmer?
Yes, thank you, President Sidell, excuse me, President Sidell, and I, I want to apologize if anybody can hear the tree cutting that's going on out here. They've been here since early this morning and. So just wanted to mention that. So first, I want to thank Ray for the clarification on the will service for vacation rentals. It was something I brought up with General Manager Weigold and he's, he stated that Ray would bring this up, so I want to thank Ray for doing so. Also, Ray, if I could just get, and I also want to thank you for mentioning the reports from. From Cindy Cleveland, is, is there a way that you can, considering the fact that we've, other than the. Atmospheric weather that we had in January with regard to the drought conditions and Cindy's reports. What is the health of the tide water goby and the red-legged frog and other creatures that live. Near the creek as well as the natural, the natural vegetation around the creek? What is the health of that, that she has found as, you know, as a result of conditions that nature has been dealing with recently? Can you give us an update on that?
Sure, sure. So. So keep in mind that. That the, the purpose of her monitoring and the purpose of these environmental surveys is not to assess, you know, is it, is this good or bad? She, the, the, the focus of the assessment is to establish a baseline, whatever it is. So it's, it is, it is what it is. What she did tell me is that, that the. The, the actual species that she's seen, you know, both vegetation and and biological. They are what she would expect to see for the time of the year it's at, like, like earlier in the year, for example, she. Yeah, she told me, oh, there, there's a, there's a bunch of fish, you know. And I think she told me like the number of fish was like a ridiculous number and, and then, you know, there's. She, and then, you know, she'll, she'll notice. Red-legged frogs and she'll, she'll mention the number, but there's not really a number for her to compare per se, like each year from year to year. Not yet, at least. As, as far as like her work is concerned, because this is, this is the first year of establishing the baseline for the AMP. So once that baseline is established, then we, we do have a way to compare it with hard data, not just anecdotal data from. From past studies that. That don't really quantify it, so. Yeah, so that's, that's what she, she has told me about it. So, but again, like the focus of it is to establish a baseline. And to assess the health of, of the. You know, from year to year, it's, it's really hard to tell that at the moment. But she is observing them as, as we.
Well, Ray, I, I want to thank you for saying that, you know, knowing her professionalism and that type of thing that. They can all, we can also get down to just hearing the report includes a bunch of fish. So, thank you for that. And also, you know, those curtain rods that you spoke about, I just hope they weren't left over from the Carol Burnett show, but. That's just, that's my, that's what I said to humor.
No, no, the curtains would have been there too, Harry.
Right, you're right, you're right.
I know what you mean, so that I, I know exactly what you mean.
Director Dean.
It does raise the question, though, of how the curtain rods got in there because it's certainly not. Certainly not something you can flush.
Normally, no.
Yeah, I also want to add my praise to Tony and Tim being able to repair that pump. I'm sure that saved the district quite a bit of. Money and it was definitely necessary to get that done, especially with the storm we've got coming. I appreciate the fact that the name of these walkthroughs. Was changed to walk through because when they were previously called audits, I had mentioned them to several people. Around me who are, who are concerned about their water use and mentioned that these were available and the term audit scared them. And now that we're calling them efficiency walkthroughs, maybe they'll be a little bit more willing to. Have a look, see it at their water usage. I do have a question, though, that's not in your report, if I'm allowed to ask it. I saw that facilities and resources has done some pruning across the pedestrian bridge, but I was curious as to what the status was. Of the pipeline across the pedestrian bridge, if I'm allowed to ask that.
Mr. Dan.
Oh, yeah, yeah, so. So the, the trimming that Carlos's group did was just like on the bridge, you know, to, and. Prior to that, like that, it was totally covering the, the bridge. So. That particular work has nothing to do with, with the waterline project. And so the update on the waterline project. The, we still don't have the pipe. We are. Anticipated to get the pipe onsite next Tuesday. So this Tuesday coming up, we're hoping to. To get this project started and, you know, and it's going to start with. And it's probably gonna, and it's gonna start with, you know, delineating the environmental barriers. Cindy Cleveland is also involved with that project for us. We'll do the, 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 the environmental surveys. And then would delineate the areas that, that are sensitive species. So all of that is going to happen and we anticipate. Tuesday is when we, when we start. Because if we, and you know, and it, it also depends on the rain too, because the, the construction is not allowed. If we, if there's point two five inches of rain, so. Anyway, that's. Yeah.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions for Mr. Dianzo as we have them available? I don't see any additional. I do recognize that there is an attendee that had a question, but we had already passed the time of. A public comment, so. What we'll do is, is go ahead and and move on to itemize the future agenda items. And we took any number of them the last time and kind of filled in any potential. Timeframe for them, it's as possible when we went through our agenda review meeting. So I appreciate that. There may be things of interest, but I will ask. The future agenda items that we are considering right now, if it's something of, you know, significant importance that needs to be. Brought forward, that's one thing, but we, we do have very dense agendas coming up. And so. If it's a matter of just having something as a placeholder down line that it, acknowledge it all going good, but. We've got a number of things to be focusing on for right now. Director Gray.
Yeah, thank you, President Sidell. I'm just going to. Extend the point I made in the. I brought up, I guess, in the, on the consent agenda. I would like, maybe we have a couple, we have a month before we have to make a decision, but I would like to have it as an agenda item. Just high deciding what criteria we will follow. To decide whether to go back to in-person meetings and that, you know, this picks up on, obviously, on the discussion about the county. And what their criteria are, whether we just use the, you know, wait for the governor's emergency declaration to expire or what. I would like, I think I would like to get that as a, a item that's not tied to the. Declaration that we do monthly.
Alright. Anything else? Right, I'm not seeing any, seeing any hands, so. What we can do then is move forward. To adjournment and we do have closed session. So I, I will adjourn, but ask them. Also, if there is any public comment relative to closed session. And Jim Weigold, I guess there's one hand up. I don't know whether that was left from before or whether this is something new.
Yes, I'll check. Tina Dickinson, go ahead.
Thank you, General Manager Weigold. President Sidell, I did have my hand up. Before you started with the last, the previous item, I did have it, but you did not acknowledge it. And may I, and so I'm going to just say that Mr. Dianzo. And may I, and so I'm going to just say that Mr. Dianzo failed to give you a very important update from. Tom Luster that he received this morning, a very important update related to the pump test. And why?
There was, there was public comment time. And it was not, your hand was not raised.
Yes, it was. Yes, it was. I'm sorry, but it was. And I'm going to send the board. I will send the board the information that Mr. Dianzo should have supplied to you in his report. Thank you.
Actually, he did make comments. He did make comment about.
No, you did not get the report. You didn't get it.
If you would like to forward that to the board, Mr. Dickinson, you're more than welcome to do so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now to go back to the item that I had called for in public comment. Or closed session. Well, Mr. Dickinson's hand is still up, so I'm not sure whether that's. Addressing the post-session or whether she just had not yet taken hand down. So, Mr. Dickinson.
Go ahead, Tina.
I didn't have it raised for this item.
Would you then take your hand down, please? All right. Not seeing any public comment then. We will move on then to closed session under different linkage. So thank you all. And let me see, let me check the time. I, what I'd like to suggest is that we at least have an opportunity for a bio break and. Also the establishment of the new linkage. So I'd like to suggest 4:15 to reconvene on the new linkage. Is that satisfactory for everyone? Okay, fine. We are adjourned.
I want to appreciate your, your poetry there. 4:15 to reconvene. Thank you.
For the board, I, I've emailed out the, the link. So it should be at the top of your email boxes.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.